Come everyone, I'm now calling this meeting to order, please stand with us. We'll be letting prayer by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Alderman at large George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the chance to be here tonight, Lord. Lord, we pray for wisdom in making decisions, Lord. Lord, we thank you that we live in a country where we have free elections, Lord, the best country in the world. And Lord, we want to pray for what's going on in Israel with the Gaza Strip. Lord, I just pray for the innocent people, Lord Jesus, who are hurting because of what's going on at that place. Lord, I also pray against people who are using the murders and the hurting of other people, Lord Jesus, that are in high places. Lord, I just pray against them, Lord. I pray that you would give relief to the people, in your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is approval of minutes for two meetings, the February twenty two thousand twenty four and the February twenty two two thousand twenty four meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Torres.
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. Next on our agenda is the request for approval for a concept mix and design for the bike track skate park at Cherry Valley Park. And Mr. Dan Cordell is coming forward. Lord, this is what I've told you about, you know, in the past meetings that we were looking at, you know, listening to, you know, some of the concerns of the citizens about, you know, try to enhance our, our parks program more so than, I mean, it's not just sports, but to further enhance it on things that are non, not necessarily sports. So like we have a major investment at the amphitheater, we have, you know, multiple millions of dollars in investment in walking trails that we've done over the last few years. But this would be another thing that, you know, just further diversifies our park program and gives us something for the, for the kids who, you know, may not do the other things, you know, that may, it's real simple. They don't have to, you know, they don't have to go get an enormous amount of equip, of equipment. They don't have to, you know, be on a team and, and travel. They don't have to, you know, have all the upfront team fees that, that come with competitive sports these days. You know, if you, if you have a skateboard or a bike, you know, you can go at it. And so that's what I like about this is it is, it is different. And so anyway, that's, that's where we are. And Dan and his team have done a lot of work in researching around the country, you know, what's hot. And I let Dan, you know, take it from there.
Well, to give a little bit more history, it's like most things that the mayor has asked us to look at, it kind of grew. I think it started out as he said, can we put a dirt track, bike track at Cherry Valley? And you can, but that's not really what the industry is doing now. And you'll see, and you heard him talk about the term pump track. And it'll handle basically, it, it's kind of replaced your old BMX bike dirt tracks. There's a lot less maintenance on them, so they're more maintenance friendly. And the intent behind them is so these rolling heels and berms generate enough energy so that you're, it's generating the momentum. And your body's generating the momentum, not necessarily the pedaling. So it's great for all ages. The reason we're giving you kind of a concept drawing here tonight is there's a lot of different ways you can go. And so these are really just concepts, so you can kind of see size parameters of, of the different aspects. We've also thrown in a skate park addition because they kind of do go hand in hand. The size of what you see is in there, in, in the industry, considered a small size skate park with a medium sized pump track. And what does that mean? Well, in the pump track world, small means you're doing something that locals will use. Medium, you're doing something that will pull from a larger area as far as the capacity, the interest. Because if you look in the pump track world, they're, they're mapping about as close as you can get to something that's not in somebody's backyard. I mean, there are people that have these in their backyard in a small scale, is really in your Little Rock area. There's nowhere in Mississippi, there's nowhere really in Louisiana, you're getting into Tennessee, you're getting into Florida. Once you get to a medium size or above, you can go to a large where they'll actually host events and do competitive events there. Now, I'll tell you, I'm by no means an expert in this arena. So this concept, what we would recommend, are there, there are people that specialize in just doing this, not local contractors. They come in and do layout and construction, is what they do. And what we would propose is putting together basically an RFP package that y'all would select that group and give them the parameters. Y'all have done that before in different items, the, probably the latest was the Field of Dreams improvements that we did there a couple of years ago. Where we told them what we wanted, they came in and they installed and gave you a proposal to do it. So tonight, the mayor and I just wanted to get an idea from y'all, what, based off of the sizing and the funds that it would take, which direction we wanted to go. What's depicted is a, like I said, a medium sized pump track with a small skate track. And I've kind of broken it up into multiple sizes. You can see on the left of one of these exhibits, and I'm sorry for the lateness of the exhibit, but you can do a small pump track. You're looking at about a three hundred thousand, three hundred twenty five thousand dollar size. The medium's about a five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that's the all in cost of them coming in and doing that. Be what we would tell them, we have this, this is the kind of size we want, and they would refine the layout. We'd give them any kind of parameters that were specific for us, but they would do the layout and the construction. And then so doing is similar work, so they would build our concept skate park at the same time. We also, to tell you where that's at, and I don't know if the mayor's indicated, but it's at Cherry Valley. And where the parking lots, you can see they're kind of bends, there's a RC track over on the, of that sheet, probably be in the bottom left. You would utilize existing parking lot, you'd come off of it, we're showing it with a gazebo type of structure. You'd have a walking path around it just for access to the different facilities. We did verify that you have room for that there and room for an expansion. If the pump track venue kicks off, you can expand it and get into a larger venue with it in that area. It also preserves some areas for the idea of ball fields or whatever type use outside of that between the, the entrance gate and that first parking lot. So the concept that's there is about a million dollars. So like I said, it grew a lot from the original BMX dirt track idea.
And then when Dan and I, when Dan presented the numbers to me, the reason that we lean towards presenting this to you with a medium track and a small skate park is because if you have a small pump track, it disqualifies you like you didn't want to have competitive events. So like you mentioned, there's the closest ones like this or Little Rock and then somewhere in central or east Tennessee. So this could actually put us on a circuit if we did want to do that and start having competitions, which again would be a tourism draw. But again, that's not our number one concern here. My, my number one recommendation to y'all is that we meet the needs of those children that, that, you know, maybe don't have the money to, you know, do other things, sports and travel on the weekends. It would be something that, that they could use, be used, could be used daily. So the, again, the reason we landed on this is it has a small skate park and then, but it does have the medium pump track, so you could use it for competitive events. If you went with a smaller one, you wouldn't be able to do that. All of this, again, when I asked Dan to do this, we looked at Cherry Valley Park and other potential use of some of the space there. And this, we have enough real estate there where we could expand on this. Like if we, we put this over there and it, and it becomes a really popular thing and, you know, we want to add to it in the future, you can tie more tracks into that pump track to make it even, you know, more elaborate. So that's kind of where we landed on that. The other thing is, y'all know it's no secret that we've had some vandalism problems at Cherry Valley Park. We wouldn't go drop a million dollars over there without knowing that we got to do some things differently there. So with this project, the things that we plan to do, number one is install a gate. Well, actually, whether we do this or not, we're going to install a gate at Cherry Valley Park to where when the sun goes down, the park closes. Parks by their nature, when they're not attended, turn out to be a breeding ground for mischief and, and problems. So it's, it's smart for our city that we lock that gate when the sun goes down. The other thing is with new technology, there's new cameras that come out. We believe that one of the most modern, cutting edge cameras could be installed over there, which gives, you know, real direct video footage to our police dispatch. So we believe that we can do a better job of protecting the park. And then the other thing is just having more re, park resources. We need to have one person, I've talked to Wes about this, that not necessarily stays there, you know, twenty-four, seven, or, or eight hours a day, you know, seven days a week or whatever. But that somebody that's, that's on their frequent routine, they spend a lot of time at the park where they're constantly supervising what's going on there. We just have come to the realization that there's just some places in our city that you just can't leave them unattended. I mean, for whatever it is, for societal or sociological reasons, it's just the way it is. So we wouldn't dump a million dollars here without making some, you know, stepping up our plan to protect Cherry Valley Park.
Mayor, I like that idea, and I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, you good with the, so we, anybody got any discussion about the size?
I got a question, so I guess in industry standards, and I'm not real familiar, what's the difference between a small skate park versus a medium? I mean, I don't, I don't know, I know small skate park.
You mean size or money? Or both?
Really, I guess size, I, I think, I mean, I know forty-five to fifty-five hundred square feet, but I'm not sure what that is laid out for a skate park, if that makes any sense.
Yes. Yeah, it, if you were looking at.
What's comparable to other cities and?
I think the one that Hernando recently did.
Before was small.
Right.
This is bigger than the one we had before.
About twice the size as the one before, I think, maybe even a little bigger than that. This is somewhere around the range of the one that they recently did in Hernando would be considered a small to medium size skate park.
In the same way that you said that they would, somebody would come in and design the pump, pump track, same thing for the skate.
They throw that all in together.
With all the bells and whistles and.
That's right. And I will say, material wise, you, you can make a pump track out of almost anything. But what you see here, kind of in working with Wes and the mayor, what we kind of went with or filtered back down was the skate park more of your traditional concrete. But the pump track that you see there is asphalt. Now, it's not the asphalt that you see out on the road, it's, it's hand installed, how they do it essentially. So it's a little bit more porous, but it doesn't have the structural load on it that like your road pavement would have. So it's more durable, less maintenance, you're not out there trying to reshape the dirt and all that. But you're not also paying for the extra cost of the concrete structures there either, so. And you will see some skateboard use, as the mayor was saying, anything like inline skates, small bikes from beginner up to pro level bikes, skateboards, will use the pump track. What you don't typically see is the, the bikes crossing over to the full skate park, a little bit more specific for skateboards.
What do we approve it?
Okay, so Alderman Hoots made a motion, and correct me if I'm not understanding, but you're making a motion that we go ahead and, and go ahead and, and get the specialty contractor to come out and give us a price and design this for a small skate park and a medium pump track.
Exactly.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a, excuse me, we have a second by Alderman Payne, and then any further discussion?
Good mayor, we.
This is just.
This, yeah, this will be the design, and then at that point, we won't, it'll be a proposal, correct?
I'll, I'll come back to y'all in the next couple of board meetings with a, a schematic package that then we'll release to and send out for RFP. To where we will request and get proposals from groups that we can all review and say, this is what we want or don't want, and go from there.
Thank you.
It's really approving the concept, size and, and budget, kind of how much we want to go for.
And Dan said we had room in between the apartments in, in this, if we decided to put some stuff out.
Yeah, for those, and most of us are familiar with Cherry Valley Park, you know that across the parking lot from the football complex, there was, years ago, there was an old bike track that was over there and it's still fenced in. So this would be just to the, just to the east of that. And you have a huge grassy area that ties into some of the old backstop, just a massive amount of land before you get to Dorchester Apartments that have been used for, by little, you know, baseball and softball teams for practice. But it's really not being used, it's just a ton of land out there. So we really, this would be close to the old track by the parking lot. So when you, if you walked across from the football field, you'd walk straight into the, to the, to this park. But again, it has tons of land, you know, for expansion if we chose to do that. And, and as we've discussed in other meetings, we're still tossing around the ideas of doing other things at the park, you know, just to, again, to bring life back to Cherry Valley Park. Okay, any other just questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Torres.
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries, thank you Dan. Okay, and next on the agenda is the, the other project I was telling you about is the authorization to bid Snowden Video Board sign. So do we have the design, what it would look, yeah, okay, so here we go. So y'all know, as we discussed last meeting, when the pedestrian bridge was built at Snowden, the other, there used to be a marquee sign or video board sign at Snowden for many years. It was old, it was very expensive to maintain because of the age of it. And then when the bridge went up, you know, didn't have proper visibility, so that sign was removed. We've not gotten, just being tied up with so many other projects, we've not gotten to readdress this again. But with the amphitheater enhancements that we did last year, now this would make more sense to put this sign further south from where the other one was, kind of about the area where the circle is at Spring Fest, which ties into the main entrance to Spring Fest right behind the amphitheater. And then it's more lined up where you can promote your concert events at the amphitheater, helps us market those events. It can be used, as shown there, to, to market other park events or even public safety things, you know, amber alerts, things like that, different miscellaneous things. So that's the purpose of the sign. What I asked them to do, and I hope you like it, I like it, is to keep it simple and classy, but match the bridge. So like when you're driving down Getwell, it doesn't look like it because of the colors on the display. But that brick would be the same brick that's used on the bridge, same mortar. And then the, the, the block base, it would be the same color, same material as the bridge. And then the sign in the middle would match the Snowden district sign on the bridge, where it's got the black background, the bronze, bronze writing. But we expect this, Wes, by the way, is, we're, have been nominated by the Memphis Business Journal as the large, the number one, the best large renovation project of the year for the Memphis Metro because of the amphitheater enhancements. So Todd Mastery and Wes in Urban Arc are there at that ceremony tonight. But anyway, Wes estimated from preliminary discussions with some sign companies that we're probably in the area of about four hundred thousand for this, so. So that's what we're recommending is tonight, that authorizing the city to go out to bid for this video board sign.
I'll make that motion, second.
We have a motion Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion?
At twenty-six feet high, that's still going to be lower than the bridge, right? Is, is, is that going to be taller than any point at the bridge?
No, it'd be lower than that, but yeah, yeah. I don't have, Whitney, what are the, do you remember?
I'm trying to think, I can't.
I know it's much taller than that.
I mean, your bridge, just to get underneath it with eighteen wheelers, you're, you're looking at somewhere around fourteen to sixteen feet, and that's just to the bottom base, and that doesn't take into effect the arc.
The arc has got to be at least.
The column ends, that'd be taller.
But this will be spaced out enough to where it commands attention, whether you're going northbound or southbound on Getwell. It'll be, and we walked the site, Whitney and Wes and I'll walk it one day, just, we consider the northern entrance, but if you do that, it's a little bit too close to the bridge. So if you put it where this is, right in the center, it's kind of like splitting the distance between the bridge and the, and nail road, kind of in that area where the main entrance to Spring Fest is. But it'll have high visibility both for northbound and southbound track.
I think line of sight will be the lower.
It'll be, it'll be lower, thirteen feet looks like it's the very middle of the sign, and your bridge, the, the bottom tier of the bridge is probably about.
It's fourteen feet off the ground.
Yeah, between thirteen and fourteen feet.
I should have a picture here, let me see my.
I, I'm good, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it, it won't, it, it won't, it's not going to, it's not going to dwarf the bridge, I mean, the bridge is still going to be the skyline, and it's a beautiful skyline, it's a beautiful bridge. And so this won't take away from our beautiful bridge. But I think it's classy, I mean, you know, matching the bridge materials, I think it'll tie in really nicely. And, and the other thing we did, or that I didn't mention is, you know, we will use this to generate advertising revenue as well. So we'll advertise our events, but then if people, businesses want to advertise there, that produces some revenue, advertising revenue for the park as well.
That's double sided, right?
Yes. Okay, any other questions or discussion about the video board sign? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Torres.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a professional service contract with Facilities Performance Group, Mr. Nick Manley, City Attorney.
This contract is with, as the mayor noted, Facilities Performance Group between the city. It's all for the maintenance of the city facilities, the city court, city Snowden House, police facilities on Northwest Drive and Highway fifty-one. The one, east precinct will be added at a later date once it's completed, the IT building and the city tennis center. It's a two-year contract, the option to extend it for two additional one-year terms. The standard termination for convenience clauses in this contract as well. So tonight, we need authorization for the mayor to sign this with Facilities Performance, Facilities Performance Group LLC, and that is also the entity that's currently doing it as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion, second.
We have a motion Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Torres.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, next on our agenda is a contract with Murphy and Sons for our tennis expansion, phase two, eight nor, eight new outdoor courts. It's going to give us sixteen outdoor courts, and then the, we have four pickleball courts and then four other tennis courts. So we can either have twenty tennis courts, or we're going to have sixteen tennis courts and twenty pickleball courts. So let me tell you, the people are absolutely losing their mind over pickleball, and so we have the option of, of making that decision. So this is going to put us in a, a big situation where we can attract other regional tennis tournaments that we didn't have enough courts to do before this. So this is a, going to be an exciting thing, a great expansion for our city.
Yeah, this is just the contract authorization, it was awarded at the last meeting in the amount of two million five hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars, and with a bid offering of one twenty-six, four ninety-six. So tonight, just need authorization for the mayor to sign the contract. for the mayor to sign the contract with Murphy &amp; Sons, just a A one-on-one contract pursuant to the AIA documents provided by Urban Arc.
So move. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Gallagher, second, Alderman Wheeler, is there any other discussion? And attorneys are into contracts, I'm, I'm into seeing real things happen.
So that, that's what the details are, where the devil lives.
Don Henley's son, right? Attorneys handle all the details. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda are the Ticketmaster terms.
Yeah, this, uh, we have to revise our Ticketmaster terms, as that we're going to be using, um, as part of our, uh, amphitheater, uh, selling of the boxes, um, what, uh, the Todd Mastery through the DCZBB, who are contracted with, um, is going, they're hopeful that this year, um, when there's premium seats available, or premium boxes available that have not been spoken for, or sold at a, uh, event or a table, that they'll be able to use those and sell those at those one-off events or individually, um, for those concerts or events that don't have them already sold, um, and so this, uh, these, um, conditions will be revised, reflect that, um, instance and those scenarios, um, as required, um, by Ticketmaster, we made a couple adjustments, or made a couple adjustments or revisions to it, um, it is your standard terms that will be reflected to, or that are reflected under Mississippi law, and also reflected to show that it's the City of South Haven project and not a, um, Ticketmaster project, and we sell them for those, so ideally, it'll bring in, um, help us bring in more revenue through the sales of those boxes and tables and suites when we have those available for events that have not been sold and/or committed to by sponsors. Um, to be frank and blunt, it probably won't be a lot, because a lot of them are already sold and spoken for, but it will help, help for those events where we can, um, use for, um, the event make, it will help for those when we have those available when they have not been sold or, uh, committed to for an event. So tonight, just need authorization to have this on our minutes, that we approve these terms as presented.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Wheeler, second, Alderman Payne, is there any discussion?
Number five on the contract, Dan, related to SARS COVID two.
Yeah.
Is that outdated?
It's out, yeah, I mean, it's just in case it comes back, we don't have, and that's just included in there, I didn't take that out in the event that.
Does it limit us to just that?
Yeah, I mean, no, it, we, we get to have the say on that.
What if it's a different one next time?
Oh, well, I think it's gonna, then your force majeure clause will come in at that point.
Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries, next on the agenda is a resolution for sanitation assessment.
Yeah, this resolution just authorizes the sanitation assessment for those who have not paid, uh, the fee as approved by the board, and it, for either a lien on the, uh, property or an additional fee for their license or their car tag.
So move. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores, second, Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is our planning agenda, Ms. Whitney Cook.
Yes, so our first application is going to be just for a minor subdivision, uh, called the Williams Minor Subdivision, it's gonna be on the north side of Bailey Road, south of Star Landing, it's four point five acres, uh, you'll see it highlighted right there in the green, it's a gentleman, uh, who would like to deed over some land to both of his sons on the back of his property, they have produced a legal binding easement that will gain access to those, uh, rear lots, and it does remain, uh, consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning that it's already in, so it was voted unanimously in favor of.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept item number one on the planning agenda as presented. Second.
On item one, we have a motion, Alderman Gallagher, second, Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our second one is a, another minor subdivision application, it's gonna be on the east side of Tulahoma Road, on the north side of King Road, uh, this is a proposal to take two point four six acres and split it into two lots, there is an existing fifty-foot wide easement, uh, that accesses this property directly off of King Road, that's already been recorded, uh, the only thing that we had, um, that we needed to address on this one was that we needed a twenty-foot easement extension to the lot to the east, so that they both touched a, um, a legal access, and they weren't considered landlocked, and a suggestion from staff and from the Chancery Clerk's Office was that the subdivision name be changed, since we already currently have a gray subdivision, uh, they did agree to both of those, so it was voted unanimously in favor of.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number two on the planning agenda as presented tonight.
Second.
On item two, we have a motion, Alderman Flores, second, Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our third application is a conditional use permit for a barber shop, uh, to be located on the north side of May Boulevard, east of Silo Square Lane North, it is going to be in the two-story mixed-use building that is just north of where the, um, Lucky Dog Music Venue is, um, per the ordinance, you can have two within a half-mile radius of each other, uh, that's a formality for this conditional use permit, uh, we did do a window survey and did find that the closest one, uh, was approx- approximately one point three miles away, uh, therefore, it was compliant, uh, with the requirements set forth in the ordinance, and was approved unanimously, uh, with one recuse, uh, from one of the planning commissioners who had direct, um, influence on, uh, the financing of it, but it was unanimously voted for with that recusal.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number three on the planning agenda as presented tonight.
Second.
On item three, we have a motion, Alderman Flores, second, Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our final application is a conditional use permit for a, um, towing service to be located, um, on First Commercial Drive at twenty-two thirty-five, First Commercial Drive, this is going to be on the west side of Highway fifty-one and on the south side, you'll see there, it is an existing building that had a motor vehicle repair shop there, um, please don't pay attention to the aerial photos, because that is not what it looks like now, um, there are some stipulations set forth in the ordinance as to how many unconcealed vehicles can be on site, um, they've agreed to that, uh, additionally, we went by, the, the fence was in need of some major repairs, the applicant has already done the repairs and has agreed to further site-proof the front gates, uh, so that you cannot visibly see any of the towed vehicles in the rear, uh, they are currently on our police towing, uh, rotation as well, so, um, it's zoned appropriately, and it did require the conditional use permit, so it was voted unanimously in favor of.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, will you approve item four on the planning agenda?
Quickly, or?
Second.
On item four, we have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second, Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yeah.
That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is our mayor's report, um, uh, just a little bit of business here real quickly, and then I wanna talk to you about a couple other things, but the congressional briefing trip, uh, Alderman Gallagher has indicated he's gonna, uh, go with me there, um, on May one through, no, May three through five, no, May one through three, and then, uh, we have room for one more, so they've asked us to let them know tomorrow, so if anyone else wants to go, you'll please let Christie know tomorrow, so she can let the Economic Development Council know, 'cause they're trying to plan, uh, the rooms and the space, uh, when we, when we go there, uh, we go into the United States Senate Building and the, um, uh, into Congress, and so we go into individual offices that are sometimes limited with space, so when you take all the cities in the county, uh, there's a pretty good number of people there, so just trying to get everybody in there, uh, to see our senators and, um, and congresspeople, um, so that's why they limit how many people, but anyway, we have room for one more, if y'all would just let Christie know that tomorrow. Last year, we finally got smart and decided that we were gonna hire a lobbyist group, you know, we pleaded with the state of Mississippi to widen their interstate, uh, I fifty-five is a, a federal highway system that is administered by MDOT, so MDOT has authority and responsibility for Interstate fifty-five, and so we finally, for, well, for ten years, uh, we've been, uh, talking to people about the priority, when that may happen, how that's gonna be funded, and then, uh, like I said, we finally got smart, the whole county, and we hired the Clearwater Group, a lobbyist firm in Jackson, and they've done trem- made a tremendous amount of strides and helped us with that, y'all know that we were allocated twenty-five million dollars for the I fifty-five widening project last year, uh, with some of it a, a, kind of a wormy promise, but a, a promise that they would fully fund it by two thousand twenty-five, so we still believe that, that that project is gonna get funded, um, but I'll just tell you, uh, I've seen a major difference, the Clearwater Group definitely moved the needle for us, and so, uh, the Economic Development Council, and it's not just I fifty-five, they do other things, keep us up to date on bills that, that could affect Assot County as a county and as, uh, the municipalities as well, so, uh, the recommendation is that we renew their contract, their contract renewals on April first, um, uh, the Economic Development Council has asked, uh, for us to take official action to renew their contract, they gave me financial numbers on what our part was, they broke it down, uh, they broke the, the lobbyist fee down based on population of the cities, and this number, for some reason, I got this late, it doesn't sound right to me, so what I'm gonna ask you to do tonight is to approve a renewal of this agreement, uh, we do have that budgeted in our professional services, uh, line item in our budget, but I'm asking you to approve it, renew it, uh, with a contingency that let me get the accurate, uh, updated numbers, so it's with that contingency, is that fair enough, Nick, or do we need to be more specific about that?
We can, I heard the, uh, contingency plan just put in, and what we do is just clarify it to the next meeting.
Okay, but if you will, so I can let them know, will you, uh, with that contingency, uh, I'm asking for a motion to renew the Clearwater Group.
Can I ask what that total is, just to have an idea of?
Um, the way this is broken down, uh, they're showing our part was twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, and then Hernando, eight thousand six forty, Horn Lake, thirteen thousand four forty, Alabran's twenty-four thousand, Walls nineteen hundred and twenty dollars.
That definitely doesn't sound right.
Huh?
That definitely doesn't sound.
It doesn't sound right to me for some reason, and I didn't have time to go back, but anyway, I'll verify that to make sure that it's correct, but anyway, just, if, if we can, uh, approve that with, with the contingency that we verified the numbers. Motion, Alderman Gallagher.
Second.
Second, Alderman Wheeler, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, as have it, motion carries. The third thing I wanna talk to you about, um, y'all know that, um, we spent a lot of effort over the years, and, and, you know, we talked about our parks program earlier, y'all know we've, uh, the city's had, uh, tremendous economic growth, you know, during recent years, and we've tried to make our city, not make it build on the fact that our city's a good place to live, it's a good place to, um, to do business, and it's also a good place to visit, I mean, we, we're a fun place, we got a lot of amenities that South Haven never had in the past, and when you do that, I always tell people when they ask me about why we do what we do, when you create a place where people wanna be, and when I say wanna be, doesn't necessarily mean you live here, it doesn't necessarily mean you're doing business here, but you may be visiting here and spending money here, which benefits all the taxpayers, uh, that live in South Haven, but with that, um, occasionally, when you become a draw, um, there's gonna be some negative that comes with it, you know, for whatever reason, uh, that's way above my pay grade, it's a sociological, again, societal thing, some people just won't act right, you know, that, you know, just, when you, when you have a large number of people, you're gonna have some problems, and so we started, um, noticing that with some of the new amenities that we've had with our restaurants, uh, specifically in the Silo Square area, because it's such a tremendous development, I mean, it's just a place where, you know, people love that concept, they love the, the shopping, they love the restaurants, uh, the food and, and dining experience is incredible there, and so we've got, uh, we got a huge draw, I mean, people are loving Silo Square, they're coming there, and, but we've started to know that, um, that with that demand and the multitudes of people that are coming, that there's some, it's, it's, again, it's that percentage thing, you have some that just can't act right, and so we've started, we've had a few problems in the parking lots of some of the restaurants, and so, I'm just gonna make this clear to everybody, all of us have spent a lot of time, and I've spent an enormous amount of my time and effort to, to move South Haven to a new plateau where it's a fun place to be, and we're not gonna let some people ruin that for the rest of us, all right? And so whatever that means, you can take that, whoever's watching, you can take that however you wanna take it, all it means that if you come to South Haven and you wanna, uh, enjoy the inner, the leisure and recreation district that we created in the Snowden District, everybody's welcome, uh, but you're gonna have some manners, and you're gonna have some common decency, and if, if you can't do that, then we're gonna, we're gonna stop you from being there, and we're gonna be tough on that, we're about to make a lot of changes in that area, we have a new police east precinct, uh, that will be, uh, ready later this year, and we're gonna increase the police presence in that area, uh, but we're also gonna hold the restaurant owners accountable, we're gonna hold businesses accountable for what happens on their property, it's no different than a few years ago, y'all may remember that, uh, with the popularity of Airbnbs, uh, that we started having party houses, we started having people that, that didn't live here that came in, and, and, I mean, they had a shindig, I mean, they were bringing, you know, live entertainment, and they were packing the house, and, and everything was going on there, and so we created, uh, Nick, um, uh, put together a, uh, what we call a house party ordinance, and we shut that down, and it's been successful, our police did a fantastic job, uh, of letting them know that, not here, it's not gonna happen in South Haven like that, and so that was very successful, so what is gonna be brought before you at the next board meeting is I've asked Nick, uh, in light of some of the recent occurrences, to, uh, go back and tweak the house party ordinance, uh, where it includes, uh, commercial properties as well, so like, and basically what that means is, um, when you, when your business, or, or what's going on at your home or your business becomes a public disturbance and starts affecting, uh, areas outside of your property, that's when we have to step in and make sure that it doesn't ruin the attractiveness of our city, and so Nick has prepared that, um, we think it's, uh, ready to go, but we didn't have time to get it on the agenda tonight, uh, but I'm gonna ask you at the next meeting to support me in sending the message that we're not gonna allow bad behavior to ruin, uh, the quality of the developments that have happened in South Haven, and so that ordinance will be in front of you at the next meeting. And that's all I have this evening, uh, next on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve the personnel docket as presented on this day.
Second. We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second, Alderman Flores, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update.
Everything will go the agenda.
Okay, moving on, next on our agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented.
Second. We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second, Alderman Hoots, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda are two claims dockets.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve docket number one, in the amount of two million two hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and eighty cents, including demand checks.
Second.
Second.
On docket one, we have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries on docket one. Is there a motion to approve docket two?
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve docket number two in the amount of $19,322 and 80 cents.
Second.
On docket two, we have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is the need, is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it, motion carries. The need this evening is claims and litigation involving the South Haven Police Department and Utilities Department, economic development within the city, and interdepartmental personnel with no action. Is there a, a motion to declare executive session?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores, second Alderman Hoots. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Eyes have it, motion carries. The mayor and board will announce our executive session.